Okay, so it's already 1:35, so let's start the session. Okay, so good afternoon, everyone. Once again, I'm Kledine Ndoma, the Students and Alumni Relations Officer of triple I. So today we'll be discussing the remote learning curriculum and of course, the upcoming mid-year 2021. Okay, so just a gentle reminder for everyone who's in the meeting right now. So always suggest everyone in purchase manner, especially later we'll be having our live Q&amp;A portion. Also, please have your microphone on mute at all times unless acknowledged or you are called to speak. And lastly, a reminder that this meeting is recorded and posted online for information dissemination purposes. So for today's agenda, we'll be having of course, the opening remarks from our director, Remote Learning Curriculum and Midyear 2021 video. So we'll be playing video to discuss the curriculum and upcoming mid-year 2021. My apologies for that. So can you see it now? Okay, alright. Okay, so again, for today's agenda, we will be having opening remarks, the discussion of the remote learning curriculum and mid-year 2021 and our live Q&amp;A. Okay, thank you, surgery. And of course, closing. Okay, so of course, let's all welcome our director of the institute. We have Sir Mike Pedrassa for our opening remarks.
Thank you Claude, thank you. Okay, so good afternoon to everyone. So welcome to our town hall. Within we will, the institute will be presenting to you a triple E faculty approved policy for the mid-year term and for the remote learning curriculum. Okay, so that will be done through the video presentation as Claude mentioned earlier. Okay, so we'll be playing that video. We have made that video available for you, for the triple E community, so you could watch it prior to attending this session. And hopefully, we're hoping that because of that, you will be able to think of of important questions that we will address by the, after we play that video, okay? So again, I would like to welcome all the students who are joining us right now, also the members of the faculty who are here. And for the students, if you have your parents with you right now, magadang hapon po sa inyo, sa mga parents. Okay, so we are doing this because, again, we are still in the pandemic and we have, however, we still have to finish our degrees and we have to abide by the curriculum that was approved for us. However, we are also mindful of the different circumstances each of us are having. Unlike before, we go to UP, we study, we go home, we do our homeworks. But our situation the last year or so have been different compared to what we had again prior to the pandemic. So some of us may have harder circumstances than others. We do not have equal opportunities, we do not have equal resources. And the triple E faculty is very mindful of that, okay? So that's why we are presenting to you these different alternatives and policies within your welfare, the student's welfare is the bottom line, okay? We're also thinking about the faculty as well. Take note that upon the onset of the pandemic, the faculty has been working very hard to deliver the classes, to make adjustments, to gather feedback from students, to design the curriculum and the learning materials that all of you are using in the classes. And I think for the first time, we will be offering major classes, major courses during the mid-year term. So this is the 135 and the 145 that we will be having this mid-year term, okay? And then recently, or the last few months, we have recognized that, yeah, everybody's already tired. Some of us are still ready to go. Again, we are under different circumstances. So we have to present different options for everyone, okay? So and the last reason why we are doing this is, well, for everyone to be informed, okay, so that you will be able to make an informed decision on what to do with the mid-year term and on the next semesters, okay? And also so that we will have consistency with respect to advising. Take note, all of you have different advisors, okay? So we want to avoid the circumstances wherein the position of one faculty member is different from the position of another faculty member. So we're doing this for everyone's information, not only for the students, but to the faculty as well, okay? So in the video that we will present, again, we will present to you a remote learning curriculum, okay? Again, the main assumption in this curriculum is that we will not get out of this pandemic, okay? That we will continue doing remote learning in the last two or three years, okay? So for the sophomores or the second years that were affected by that last year, the assumption is that you will graduate in two years' time na remote learning lahat, okay? So that's the main assumption, okay? So you might be seeing, or the curriculum that you might see will be quite drastic, okay? However, the triple E faculty, we are committed to conduct a continuous review process, okay? So take note that we will be doing this every sem, okay? So we have proposed a curriculum at the start of the first sem, and then we have reviewed that and we have presented another set of rules and curriculum the second sem. And right now, sorry for that, in preparation for the mid-year, we're doing that again, okay? When circumstances change, when the IATF is presenting us, has presented us different leeway or more leeway to conduct our classes, we will definitely revisit this curriculum and we will adjust accordingly, okay? But again, as a disclaimer, the assumption in the curriculum that we will present is that we will be under remote learning, strictly remote learning in the next couple of years, okay? So again, thank you very much for, to JB Tata, Tim and Claude for organizing this session and also to the students who have attended this session. Again, we will be, or this session is recorded, it will be placed in venues that are accessible so that if you feel that your classmates that aren't here would benefit from viewing this video, please tell them to watch the video and if ever, or if you have more questions, okay? After this session, or if your classmates are not here, have questions, we are open. And just a bit to us, we will tell you how to do that later on before we say goodbye, but we will be very happy to answer your questions, okay? So again, thank you very much and good afternoon to everyone.
Thank you, Sir Mike. Okay, so for that, let's move on to, so here's the video to discuss the remote learning curriculum. Good afternoon and welcome to this discussion on the triple E I remote learning curriculum and mid- year 2021. As we- You all know, the COVID-19 pandemic has forced us to switch to remote learning last year. So we all had to adjust to this new environment of working from home or learning from home, which for most may not be ideal. What we know for now is that first sem of 2021, 2022 will still be delivered remotely. The second semester would possibly be still the same. And actually, it is still uncertain when we will be able to shift back to face-to-face learning. So when we welcomed you to triple E I, when you entered UP, you were given this BOR approved checklist. It is an eight semester program with an average of 18 units per semester and a total of 145 units. Please note that for the rest of this presentation, what will be presented would be the checklist for the BS COE. But as we all know, the first five semesters of the program of electrical engineering, computer engineering and electronics engineering are all the same. You just start your specialization courses once you reach third year second semester. So for example, if you are a BS ECE student, this would just be replaced by ECE 161, ECE 163, ECE 164 and so on. So I hope you also have your curriculum flowchart. Although the information may seem to be redundant with your checklist, this one gives you a visual of how the prerequisite chain looks like. For example, on your last semester, you have your final year project. The prerequisite of this is 196, which also has a prerequisite of 192, which again has a prerequisite of 158. So you will be able to see how delaying or moving one subject could affect the rest of the subjects down the line. So last year, we released version one of our remote learning curriculum. As mentioned, we were adjusting to the remote learning setup. Our study environment are non-ideal and therefore, we had to set a lower cap on the semester load. So when we released version one, the cap that we set was 17 units. So for first year, for example, instead of having 18 units, this was really reduced to 15 units and the extra units were moved to mid-year. For the second year, instead of having 20 units, it was reduced to 17. This time, triple E 135 from the first semester and triple E 145 from the second semester were moved to the mid-year. And this is how the third year and the fourth year checklist looked like. After having gone through remote learning for one semester, we observed that 17 units is still too heavy and 15 units is even barely manageable. So last semester, we actually further reduced the semester cap to 15 units. And having gone through two consecutive semesters of full load, the students or even the faculty may want to have some break. And the mid-year is actually the good time for this before starting another school year. For those with backlog requirements or incompletes, the mid-year can also be used to catch up on this requirements. So we revisited the remote learning curriculum and now we are presenting version two of the remote learning curriculum. So the main thing that we tried to address in this version is that we want to avoid offering triple E courses in the mid-year so that the student may have the option not to take mid-year classes and instead use that time to probably take a break or catch up on backlog requirements. To also avoid overloading the faculty, we try to avoid offering courses in consecutive semesters. And then after some review, we set the semester load to 16 units max. That would be something like 15 units lecture with an additional one unit lab, which by design is supposed to complement the prerequisite lecture courses. Okay, so this is now version two of our remote learning curriculum. The first year is still the same as version one. For the second year, we apply the 16 units cap and therefore, instead of having 17 units, we now have 14 units. Previously, 135 and 145 were scheduled for the mid-year. This time, we replace them with the GE that we removed from the first and second semesters. And now 135 and 145 were moved to regular semesters. So 145 is moved to third year first sem, while 135 is second year, third year second sem. Okay, then to accommodate this move, 115X subject is moved to the, from third year to fourth year first semester. So for BS COE and BS ECE, this is 155, which is power systems. For BSEE, since they would need 155 in their specialization courses, this one is swapped with 157. So it is 157, which is moved to the fourth year. Okay, then if we add all the units in scheduled for the mid-year, that's a total of 27 units. So those students who would opt not to take mid-year can actually simply move these GE courses to the fifth year. So just to summarize the changes that we have from version one to version two, we changed the semester cap to 16 units instead of 17. We have a 12 to 16 unit regular load instead of 15 to 18. So for next semester, this assumption still holds. Then 135 and 145, which were scheduled for the mid-year of year two, are now moved to year three regular semester. And then 115X course, that's 155 for ECE and COE and 157 for BSEE, is moved from year three first sem to year four first sem. Okay, so those are the changes from version one to version two. So what does this version two mean to you as current students? So for freshmen, if you look at the checklist of version one and checklist of version two, they are actually the same. So the freshman will now be following version two. For the sophomores, the first year was pre-pandemic. Second year first sem had a 17 unit cap, while the second semester had a 15 unit cap. So one GE was removed and they are scheduled to take 135 and 145 this mid-year. Okay, so for students who would opt not to take mid-year classes, they can take 145 on the first semester and 135 on the second semester of the following school year, which means that they will be following version two. While those who would be taking 135 and 145 would be following version one. Third year and fourth year would be version one, except that we apply the 16 units cap, which means that we move some subjects to the mid-year. Then finally, for the juniors, the current third years going to fourth year, first two years were pre-pandemic. So you would have finished 73 out of the 145 units in the curriculum. This year, following version one, you had 16 units in the first semester, 15 units in the second semester. So this essentially is version one, applying the 16 units cap for each semester. If you do not have deferred grades, drop, incompletes, then you, it's possible that you were, you applied for overload last semester, taking 18 units and therefore, this would now be just three units. The same rule will apply next semester. So if you're up to it and you do not have any pending grades or incompletes for the last two semesters, then you can also take 17 units next semester. And similarly, on the last semester, since you're graduating, you're allowed to do an overload. So essentially, it's the original version one. Yep, so that's essentially what would happen to existing students. Of course, the incoming freshmen would be given the version two of our checklist. So just to summarize, the cap that we are following for version two is 16 minutes. Again, we are constantly revisiting this remote learning curriculum. So if the circumstances change, for example, if we are able to shift to face-to-face learning, then we can adjust this cap. Current freshmen would be following version two. Sophomores who would opt not to take 135 and 145 this mid-year may do so and follow version two. While the rest of the new curriculum students will be following version one, possibly a revised version, applying the 16 units cap. Okay, then finally, what about mid-year? So mid-year will start in July, regular registration is July 1 and 2, okay? So again, as we have mentioned in the previous slides, enlistment or enrollment in the mid-year is still optional. That is, if you are willing to move those supposed GE courses from mid-year to the additional fifth year. Maximum units for this mid-year is six units, okay, for triple E I. Notice that we also included here that it is subject to evaluation of the advisor. So if you plan to take mid-year classes this mid-year, we, please, please inform your advisor so that you can, your advisor can at least assess how you were able to, at least assess if you were able to, if you're able to actually take on six units. For meritorious cases, students may also be allowed to enlist more than six units. For example, those who are graduating this mid-year term, of course, for now, that would just be the old curriculum students. They may discuss it with their advisor and apply for overload. For those without pending grades, drop or unresolved incomplete in previous two semesters and feel that you can take on more than 16 units, you may also request for an overload, of course. with the endorsement of your advisor. So um that's the end of this uh presentation. Thank you for your time. For feedback on our, on the version two of the, of our remote learning curriculum, please uh fill out the feedback form at H T T P S tiny U R L dot com. Triple E I Remote C U R R, which is a shortcut for curriculum feedback. So it's triple E I Remote C U R R Feedback. Or for other concerns, you may also email D D A P, that's Deputy Director for Academic Programs, at triple E dot U P D dot edu dot P H.
Okay, thank you very much. So that's our Deputy Director for Academic Programs, Ma'am Anastasia Alvarez. So there, as you can see, there's a form. So you could um send us your feedback about the updates in the curriculum. And if you may have also questions, actually, we'll be having our live uh question and answer uh today during the town hall meeting. So before our um live Q and A, um I'd like to share with you that we will also be having a town hall meeting for triple E one three five and one four five. So this is for students who are planning to take these courses this um mid-year term twenty twenty-one. So our course handlers will be discussing the prerequisites and guidelines for these subjects. So that would be on June twenty-three, three P M. Also, would be available via Zoom. And of course, our Facebook page. Okay, so for our Q and A portion, um for those who may have comments, so we'll be doing it by year level. So we have the exit com, we have Sir Mike, Ma'am Tata, and Sir J B together with us if um you have any questions. So first, for freshmen, maybe you could share your questions on our um comment section on Facebook and here on Zoom. Okay, so far, we don't have comments yet. How about for sophomore students? Yes, Sir Mike, sorry.
Claude?
Yes, Bob?
Uh were we able to collect questions online?
Um yes, sir, we were able.
Oh, kasi maka may, if there are questions uh from freshmen, maka pwedeng uh yun muna yung sagutin natin.
Okay, sir. Um I'll call on Tim, our information officer, to help us with the comments um or questions sent via the feedback form. Tim?
Wait, uh I'll just open the uh form.
Actually, we plan to answer the questions per year level ano para, para hindi ma-magulo.
Yes, sir, apo.
So far po, sir, wala pong questions sa freshman level.
Okay. Sige, uh maybe we could move on to the sophomore level. Yung mga, uh if there are freshmen uh in the group or even on Facebook, baka sa Facebook, baka may nagpo-post ng tanong ano, so pakitignan din lang. Uh we, we can go back to those questions later.
Yes, sir. So far on Facebook, we have not received any comments yet. Um for sophomores, um Tim, do we have any questions or comments?
Uh no questions then po for uh sophomore. Meron, meron tayo though for the junior curriculum na um concerned.
Yeah, sige, please. May mga yung tanong?
Ano po, sir, um. There is a fatal mistake for the junior curriculum. Batch twenty-eighteen did not take a G E elective in the second semester of second year. Assuming they will pass second semester academic year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the average on-time student has forty-one units left, including mid-year twenty twenty-one. This means that there is a G E missing on the fourth.
Si Ma'am Tata, nakareasure hand, mukhang nasagutin ni Ma'am Tata yung tanong. Sige, um address ko lang yun, no? Kasi um first off, I would like to apologize for that. Mali yung unang materials na nilabas namin. Pero if you notice dito sa presentation na to, pinalitan na natin. That's why yung mid-year ng juniors, six units na yung G E. So pati yung video and the checklist sa website, pinalitan na din namin. And I would like to thank yung batch rep for that, for pointing out that error. Pero at least yung concerns na yun on the feedback form with regards to yung number of units for the juniors and yung timeline yung juniors na address naman na siya and reflected na siya dito sa video na currently pinalabas.
Ma'am Tata, um may wino kung, kung saan na napublish yung mga checklists natin?
Yes, so yung checklists natin, complete yun per year level and per course, um nasa website na natin yun. If you go through yung um undergraduate programs, kunwari kung B S Q E kayo, punta kayo sa Q E, sa ilalim nun, andun yung lahat nung checklist. So pwede niyong tingnan dun. Yung video, um naka-provide din naman yung link from, nasa YouTube naman siya. Yung sa YouTube channel ng triple E.
Okay, uh thank you, Ma'am Tata. Sige, uh while, while waiting for the questions from the students, um siguro I'll just uh give you some additional information that uh last week, uh Tata and I, uh Doctor Alvarez and I, consulted with the Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs uh with respect to this uh remote learning uh curriculum. And the main uh advice that we got from the Vice Chancellor was, well, to inform uh the students, okay, so that we will have an, an informed, or when you make your decisions, at least you know um um what are, uh what will you get or what would be the consequences of those uh decisions that, that you make, okay? Um and the other thing that we talked about was uh the free tuition, because uh well, you're enjoying free tuition and, and if ever you choose uh say uh to take a break during the mid-year term, um what would happen to the free tuition, you know? Um and we were advised by the Vice Chancellor that uh for four-year programs, the vice, uh sorry, the free tuition uh may be extended by an additional year, okay? So, so if ever, if ever you, you choose to, 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 uh not to enlist during the mid-year term um and, and, and choose to, to, to finish the degree, your degree in five years, your fifth year will still be covered by the uh free tuition app, okay? However, if, if there are some mishaps along the way, for example, uh and you have to, to, to do a sixth semester, sana wag naman ano, um uh the law right now, as it stands, uh would not cover that additional year, okay? The fifth year will be covered, okay? However, the sixth year will not be covered. Uh take note that the university has a rule of twelve units minimum for the students. Uh recall, uh pre, pre-pandemic, the minimum number of units that students can take is fifteen units. And, and the university lowered that to twelve units. So, so there are students that are taking only twelve uh units per semester. And naturally, um uh because they're taking fewer units, uh they would take more semesters to, to finish. Hence, uh the additional year will be co- will be covered by the, uh by the free tuition app, okay? And uh right now, um um the, the university is uh looking or requesting for the possibility to have that additional one year to be extended, okay? Uh there's no definite news yet, okay? Uh no news yet, but the university is working on that if that additional year uh can be extended to, to longer uh than one year, okay? So any other, uh any questions? Tim, Claude, do we uh, do we have questions from any level that we can answer?
Okay. Sir, we have one. I received a direct message. So it's from sophomores. Let me go back. Okay, for sophomores taking triple E one three five or one four five, what does subject to approval of advisor entail? No incomplete, et cetera?
Ma'am Tata, can you ano? Can you answer, Ma'am Tata?
Uh I think yung, yung question refers to the six units max, um subject to evaluation of the advisor. So kung ang kukunin naman is one three five and one four five, then uh ang mangyayari lang yan is a discussion with the advisor as to whether you can actually handle the load. Um kumbaga, uh yung one three five and one four five naman were designed na magkasabay sila this mid-year. Um yun lang, parang additional assessment lang yun. Kung um mas maganda ba sa inyo na six units yung kunin niyo? Or if it would be better na kunwari, one four five lang muna yung kunin niyo this sem and one three five, uh this mid-year pala, and one three five on the, uh one four five. Sorry, baliktad, maguloko ulit. Kung mid-year ay kunwari kunin niyo lang ay one three five, and then you take one four five on the first semester. So it's more like a discussion with the advisor para tingnan kung um kung alin yung mas magandang strategy. So same applies to kahit hindi one three five or one four five. Gano naman yung tinitingnan natin, kung kaya niyo yung load na yun and um kung magandang strategy na ba yun for you knowing na um tuloy-tuloy ito from first sem, second sem, mid-year, and then first sem ulit, na halos walang break. Yun, so it's just a discussion with the advisor.
Thank you, Ma'am Tata. Um we have another question. This is actually both from sophomores and juniors. They're asking if triple E would reserve slots for G E subjects.
Sagot ko nalang din, no? Tuloy ko na, um kung napapansin ninyo, naglalabas kami ng mga um parang demand survey. So kunwari, naglabas kami ng demand survey for the mid-year para alam natin kung ano yung plan ninyo kunin. And then once na, na, nakulat na namin yun, nagre-request tayo ng slots from the um offering units, yung sa mga G E. Um yung iba naman ay nagsespecify talaga ng kung ano yung time slot, ilang slots yung reserved for triple E. So those na nag, kunwari, for this mid-year, yung mga nag-fill out, some of you might have received an email stating na ito yung time slots na available for us. Naka-reserve talaga sa atin. Yung iba naman, hindi sila nagre-reserve talaga ng time slots or um sections for us, pero nag-ooffer sila. So parang ang sinasabi nila is, meron kaming available na mga subjects na yun. So yun, um we try to uh request to at least save some slots for triple E I. Um nangyari naman yun for some. Yung iba naman, at least uh the offering units are aware that they are um they are, they should be expecting about that number of students um requesting for that subject. Yun. I hope nasagot ko yung tanong.
Thank you, Ma'am Tata. Okay, so um for our Facebook page, um Tim, do we have any questions or comments from Facebook page?
Actually po, meron po, um ang concerns po nila is on E E E one three five and one four five. Considering that there is still an overwhelming amount of students who are wait-listing for triple E one three five and one four five, will there be additional slots to be added in the currently available sections? As of right now, we only have twenty-four slots available and around one hundred forty students are still wait-listing for these two subjects. We believe that taking these two subjects during the mid-year is important to most triple E sophomore students since we want to lessen our academic workload as well in the following semesters.
Sige, and dito ba si Dale? Si Dale, makang wala.
So Ma'am Tata, ikaw uli.
Sige, um sagutin ko lang. Uh meron bang available slots? Yes. So nag-open kami ng, nag-open tayo ng slots for one three five and one four five. Medyo conservative pa yun na ang, at least, at the very least, ay ma-accommodate namin lahat nung nag-request um through the mid-year demand. Although siyempre, we're expecting na more or less the one whole batch will be re- uh requesting for that. Uh so currently, uh nag-open ng two additional sections for one four five ata. And then yung mga existing na sections will also, ay yung slots sa existing sections will also be increased. So um yung, sir Dale, ang mag, magpa-process nung waitlist ninyo. Pero rest assured na um i-accommodate namin yung mga students who want to enlist in one three five and one four five.
Tim, do we still have questions or comments from Facebook?
Uh one more po sa. Uh ano po, sir?
May comment yata sa chat box from Ray Gonzalez.
Yes, sir. Okay, so from Sir Reynaldo, um comment from the experience this year. I have two subjects po na essentially nag-expend po ng semester because for some reason, nagkaroon ng idle time and the later modules wherein uploaded is scheduled in the course outline. I hope this doesn't happen in the incoming years po because mag-o-overlap po yung terms namin, which is stressful, especially if mag-o-overload pa. And yung mga scholarships po na nagre-request ng graduate time at that age. Thank you. Do you have any comments, sir?
Uh Ray, Reynaldo, thank you for uh for that comment, ano. Um again, uh the, the faculty, we are, we are trying our best to, to deliver this uh the courses that are assigned to us, okay? Um unfortunately, um thi- these things happen. Um however, the faculty, I, I would like to assure you that are working very hard to, to, to to post or to make those uh learning materials available on time. Um what we're, what's working for us right now is that when everyone has been learning uh o, o, on the process, of the process and actually, yung maganari dito is that for next year, uh more or less, we have, we have done all the, or we have covered uh a significant amount of, 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 of course finish a significant amount of course packs, okay? And we just have to prepare these course packs for the new classes, okay? Uh we're not saying that we will be uh just throw, uh doing the same thing again, you know? Uh the, the previous course packs will still be the basis of the classes uh next sem. But we also recognize that they, those can still be in, uh improved, okay? Uh those can still be improved, eh there, there would be additional to those, okay? And uh but, but with respect to the timing, again, uh we recognize the impact of that. Kaya nga, we're also adjusting the, the requirements in terms of the quantity and, and the frequency and, and, and the, the uh yeah, the, the length of each requirement that, that you have to submit, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Sir Mike. Um we also have another question. Thank you, sir Mike. Um, we also have another question. Um, hello, I'm an incoming fourth-year student. May I just know what are the reasons behind? Why is triple E setting a sixteen-unit cap for a regular semester? Is this to prioritize the well-being of students and faculty? Sir Mike or ma'am Tata?
Yeah, that's, the answer to that is yes, okay? Uh, when we were designing the, the, the remote learning curriculum, uh, again, we, we did the course, uh, the program we designed within uh, the university gave us the freedom to shift the classes around. And then we have to deliver these classes in remote learning fashion of, with reduced number of weeks, okay? We are ve- very mindful of the time that, that you will be spending uh, in the requirements. In fact, uh, uh, prior to the start of the sem, all the classes have already laid out the activities uh, for the entire year, week per week. So parang, we, we already have an idea of how, uh, for example, for the second-year students, we, we have an idea how the first week will look like, how the second week will look like, how the third week would look like. Uh, we are mindful that uh, no major requirement should be coincident, okay, uh, in terms of the weeks or, or, or on days, okay? Because uh, we are aware that, uh, we are conscious of the, of the time that everyone can allot. So uh, again, ang regular working hours is eight, sorry, not eighty, forty hours a week. But, but let us admit, you know, it's, it's really difficult to work uh, eight hours a day continuously. So we, we have this notion that maybe a thirty-hour or, or even less, a thirty-hour week would be workable, okay, uh, for everyone. But uh, again, uh, we have different circumstances, we have different uh, resources uh, available to us. Uh, the, the faculty were also mindful of, of the work that they're pouring in, the preparation of the course packs, answering the, the, the chats, uh, the consult, the, the questions in the consultations, uh, also checking of the papers. So yeah, you, you're right. Uh, we are looking at the, uh, the welfare of the students and, and the faculty as well. Uh, back to you, Claude.
Thank you, sir Mike. Okay, let's just check. Okay. So, so far, we don't have um, any additional questions or comments on Facebook? Okay, I just received this now. Okay, this is unrelated to mid-year term, but still quite crucial. I want to know what happened to the deadlines and remaining materials regarding E C E one six four, because the instructors have deliberately ignored our questions about this on Piazza or the past thirteen days.
Okay, thanks for bringing this up. Um, uh, baka may faculty member tayo who's handling E C E one six four and can answer the, the query from, from, from Mr. Tolentino? Anyone from the faculty? Tata, any comment?
Hi, Mike.
Yes, JB.
Uh, ayan na. Hi, Jose. So um, I'm not part of the one six four teachers, but obviously, I'm part of the junior E C E now faculty handlers. So yes, thank you for raising this. So obviously, there has just been challenges then with the preparing the materials for one six four. So initially, uh, the general pre, uh, sort of spirit or principle, kasi of the one six four was to align it with one six one and one six three. And then initially, we were trying to allow, we were allowing the students to catch up to one six one, since we decided to do a sequence of comparing of one six one and one six three. So, and then, so, and then we, we decided to, to delay the, the release of the one six four of, of the latter part of one six four in consideration that in, of the one six one, so that you can catch up with the one six one and the, and the activities that are aligned with one six one. So, and that goes uh, both for one six three and the latter part of one six four, which is, yeah, align the latter part of one six four with uh, with one six three, which was, which offered towards the end of the semester. So, um, but yeah, um, we have taken note of this, uh, and we, and the handlers, one six four, and the latter part of one sixty are also trying their best to deliver the materials that uh, you guys can step back up. So, uh, we will be, I think the one sixty and the one six four will be uh, making announcements soon, so please watch out na lang on that, and uh, thank you for your understanding.
Uh, Jose, just to add, um, I, I would like to suggest that, that we, well, somehow formalize this, ano, uh, this concern, uh, 'yung, 'yung pag raised ng concern, uh, please send an email to, to me and, and C C, uh, JB. Uh, maybe you could, uh, I, I suggest you put there all the concerns, okay? And then uh, we will take this up with the handlers of, of, of E C E one six four, okay? Um, to the rest of the students, uh, again, don't be worried if you are um, informing us of, of uh, some of your concerns in your classes. Um, not only me, but I think the rest of the faculty are appreciative that, that you're telling us uh, uh, all of those concerns. So, uh, once you have that, uh, we will, uh, once we have received that email, we will take this up uh, with the E C E handlers. Para ano, para nandun talaga 'yung ano, 'yung lahat ng concerns, and then mapag-usapan din namin at our level. Uh, thank you. Claude?
Yes, sir. Uh, alright. I think it's.
Ayan, so, uh, there was another uh, direct, uh, direct message regarding I did one six three. So, yeah, we, we had discussions then, 'yung ju, uh, the junior E C E handlers had discussions last, last week. So, and then, obviously, ngayon lang, ngayon lang din naman 'yung opportunity for you students to give feedback. I mean, I think we made the announcement uh, last Wednesday. So, yeah, um, I think some other students have already raised this, and we are already starting the conversations now then with one sixty and one six four. So, we will be um, releasing uh, announcements regarding this. So please stand by that. We, we are finalizing na lang 'yung mga uh, smaller details about this, but yes, uh, these concerns have been uh, considered. So there were, there was just a, for the benefit of everyone, there was just a question about, you know, there remaining modules for one six three. So, and why the, and why we decided to extend the semester? So, yeah, so we will make a further announcements regarding this. So, siguro after that, if you have further concerns, so please um, raise it na lang to the one, to the handlers, or yeah, to, through me, to the D S A, or to the director, or to the D A. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir JB. Okay, so, um, Tim, do we still have um, additional questions or comments?
None so far from Facebook.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Um, I just received a direct message just now um, from a sophomore student, um, delay, can we insert G over loading if you wanted to? Are we sure that the sophomores that want to take one three five and one four five, this mid-year will get slots? Some of us don't want to opt for version two. So for this question, um, I think it was um, also addressed earlier that uh, the faculty is um, doing their best to coordinate with units for the slots for G. Okay. Sir Mike, would you have any comments? Sorry.
So, sorry, hindi ko naitindihan 'yung tanong. Uh, first, the first part.
Uh, first part, can we insert G, um, the question is delay, can we insert G over loading if you wanted to? Are we sure that the sophomores who, that want to take one three five and one four five this mid-year will get slots? Some of us don't want to opt for version two.
Sige, so 'yung kakaintindi ko, una would be, if they want to take one three five and one four five, uh, will they be given slots? Again, the answer to that is uh, yes. If you need it, uh, we will give it to you. I think 'yung unang tanong was, if the student would want to uh, take a G E on top of one three five and one four five, uh, that, that will be done, that will be approved on a case-to-case basis. But again, uh, let me remind everyone that if you want to do that, um, uh, the, but, there are no drops. In the, in the previous two sims, there are no drops, there are no incompletes, and there are no deferred grades especially, okay? Uh, take note that currently, the classes in the mid-year are allocated two hours a day for five days, okay? Two hours a day for five days. So if you're going to take three classes during the mid-year term, so imagine that is six hours a day of classes for five days in a week, that's Monday to Friday, okay? And, and that would be difficult, especially if you have pending grades, like you have an incomplete, or if you have a deferred grade. Okay, so we assume that you also would want to, to work on that uh, during the mid-year term, okay? And, 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 and we want to be uh, realistic, okay? Um, that, that, that will be, that is very difficult. Hence, uh, if, if you have plans of taking more than the required minimum, uh, your advisor will talk to you, will look at your circumstances, will look at your previous records. Uh, you, you, both of you will, will make an assessment, how, how, uh, how would it look like, okay? If, if, if it can be done uh, during the mid-year term, okay? So, ayon, uh, please trust the judgment of your uh, advisor, your registration advisor during the mid-year term, because I would like to assure you that your welfare is, is his or hers primary concern. Thank you, Claude.
Thank you, sir Mike. Um, another question we have is that, another concerns, um, triple E one nine two final presentation would be in July sixth, which is conflicting sa July five na regular schedule ng mid-year. Would it be possible for students to overload and get nine units?
Parang hindi yata connected 'yung tanong. Uh,
Yes, sir.
Sige yata.
Sige. I think um, the concern is, um, posible na 'yung student would want to request for an overload for mid-year. Ang problem is, by the time that they would be registering, wala pa silang grade for one nine two. So, um, na, na bring up na din sa akin to ni ma'am Rox. Ang sabi ko naman, they can request for a certification from the instructor na passing naman 'yung kanilang standing, and therefore, considered as, parang internally, considered as passed na sila for that course, which means that kung gusto nga nilang mag-overload and wala naman na silang ibang pending na grades, then they can add, that certification um, can be, kumbaga, accepted as proof na sort of naipasa nila 'yung one nine two. May kulang lang na, parang additional steps before submission of the claims.
Thank you. Actually, dito papasok 'yung ano eh, 'yung, 'yung uh, 'yung consultation ninyo with your advisor. Kasi iba-iba 'yung circumstances ninyong lahat, you know? So, kung may mga ganung case or other, other cases pa, uh, your consultation with the supervisor, with your advisor is uh, the best time uh, to, to raise those, okay? Uh, Claude?
Thank you, sir Mike, sir Mike and ma'am Tata. There's follow-up clarification lang po for triple E one three five and one four five. For the peace of mind na lang, is it guaranteed na everyone will be given slots?
If you need the slots, you will get the slots. Uh, our, uh, our approach here is to open twelve units muna per section, ano? Uh, twelve unit, uh, twelve slots per section para ma-equalize namin 'yung ano, uh, 'yung number of students per section. Uh, take note that we have rolled out a demand survey last year, okay? And, and 'yung, 'yung basis, or 'yung twelve unit, or 'yung twelve students per section, uh, ang basis nun, uh, 'yung resulta na nakukuha namin from the demand survey. However, if you weren't able to fill up, fill that up um, and, and definitely mas maraming students, 'yung, 'yung hinging ng slots, then we will adjust accordingly. So pakibantayan sa C R S, tataasan namin 'yung number of slots per section uh, parang across the board para ma-equalize 'yung distribution nung ano, nung, nung, nung mga estudyante sa mga slots, okay? Uh, I think may, may proseso na dito na ginagawa si, uh, si Joanna at si Tata. Maybe Jo and Tata, you could uh, uh, contribute to the discussion. Uh, yeah, si Adrian yata eh, nakataas na. May Adrian muna, sige sir.
Um, um, independent po sa number of slots sa one three five, no? Pero, I'd just like to point out na magkakaroon ng town hall lang, one three five and one four five this Wednesday. And um, during the town hall, we will make clear to everyone kung ano 'yung expectations namin from students. Kasi ano eh, um, given na mid-year offering, there, uh, we made some compromises with regards to 'yung selection of topics and 'yung general expectation from students. So upon, hopefully, the town hall on Wednesday will help um, students decide kung kakayanin nga ba na makapagtake ng one three five and one four five, because you also have to really consider um, the, the mental toll of uh, taking coursework over the mid-year. So, if you're considering one three five and/or one four five this mid-year, I strongly encourage you to, to at least um, participate in Wednesday's town hall. Ayon, mahirap siyang saputin right here in few minutes.
Thank you, Adrian. Yeah, this is the reason why we are doing this right now, ano? Uh, we're at the middle of completing requirements, come the faculty check, checking your papers. Pero, we want to, to give you all the information and all the advice that we can uh, prior to, prior the start, prior to the start of the mid-year. Thank you, Adrian. Tata, um, or Joanna, maybe you could, ano? Uh, tell us about 'yung process, allocation of slots sa one three five and one four five? How are you going to do it?
Sorry, si ma'am Tata, si Guro, tsaka si Dale, um, they're the ones, si Dale is the one who manages the uh, waitlist. And I, ang alam ko, is the first waitlist is supposed to be processed on Friday, June twenty-five.
Ah, ma'am Tata?
Sige, dagdag ko na lang. So, um, we're, we're simply following actually 'yung, 'yung schedule as given by UP system. So 'yung departmental waitlist is June twenty-five to July eight. So currently, we already have, um, yun, alam naman ng mga students, kung ilalay naka waitlist for one three five and one four five. Um, andun na din 'yung, kumbaga, naka-open na 'yung mga, 'yung additional sections for one four five and um, ready naman na to increase the number of slots per section. So, ito ay ipa-process ni sir Dale by uh, Friday, June twenty-five. So, after that, makikita niyo naman kung naipasok kayo. Um, so yun, parang twenty-five, twenty, by, by June twenty-six, ang target ay, at least 'yung mga initial na nag-waitlist ay mapapasok na. And um, klaro naman sa, sa lahat yun na, uh, 'yung mga gustong mag-one three five, mag-one four five, basta't waitlist lang kayo, then um, mas mapapasok naman kayo dun sa mga sections.
Thank you, ma'am Tata. Ako pa? Alright.
Yes po.
Ako pa. Uh, Tim, do we still have any questions from our feedback form or on Facebook?
Um, sa Facebook po, wala na po. Sa feedback form, meron tayong isang question na, "If I were to overload my units correctly, would it still be possible to graduate by second semester of academic year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two?"
Thank you, Tim. Um.
Year na siya. Nagprovide ba siya ng information? Kung anong year na siya? Baka incoming fourth year?
Yes po, sir, incoming fourth year.
Yeah, actually, ano eh, uh, kapag graduating 'yung student, again, case-to-case basis, ano, um, we, we, we can allow uh, the, the overloading, especially for, ano, for, for graduating uh, students. So, again, uh, consult with your advisor, uh, ilalatag ninyo kung ano 'yung units left, a number of units to go, and then uh, if, if you have done, uh, well, the past couple of semesters, uh, you may be allowed uh, to take more units than the, the minimum.
Thank you, sir Mike. Okay, so, so far, wala na rin pong comments on our um, Zoom chat box. Tim, wala na rin sa Facebook, no?
Yes po, wala na.
Mag, mag sige. Kung mag-crap up na kayo, uh, may siguro, pahabolang, uh, a reiteration of, 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 of what we have said earlier, ano? Uh, again, uh, all of these checklists are available to you, uh, so you can study them. Um, they are on the website. Um, they are on the website. Uh, and take note that, ano naman siya eh, um, we, we are, we're doing an iterative uh, process. Whenever our circumstances would change, uh, we will definitely review this, okay? Um, if, if on the next SEMs, uh, we will be allowed to do some face-to-face, then we will definitely, um, allow for, uh, uh, the increase of the minimum. Or if not, uh, return to, to version zero of, of the curriculum, uh, that, that, that you know. Okay, thank you, Tim and Claude.
Thank you, Sir Mike. Let me just check. Okay, so, so far, we don't have pending questions or comments. Uh, and rest, rest assured to everyone that all the responses that we receive from the, um, feedback form will, are recorded and communicated to the faculty in charge. So, we'll be responding to you if, in case hindi nasagot 'yung question through this on town hall. Okay? Okay? Alright, so, just to remind everyone, we have this feedback form for the remote learning curriculum, which has been discussed earlier. So, you could scan the QR code or check the link if you may have further feedback. And actually, this would be posted also on our Facebook, um, page for your reference. Another thing is we have the end of semester sensing survey. So, this one, um, uh, this is survey for us to know, um, what are your learning experiences, remote learning experience during the second semester? And hear from you, what could be, um, improvements or what could be your concerns during the semester? So, you could scan or check the link. We'll be posting also this, um, survey on our Facebook page. And lastly, we also have, we've launched this triple E grievance forum. This is for students who may, who may, who may have, um, challenges or concerns regarding their subjects, their classes, or maybe on the processes, um, that we may have in the institute. And of course, um, this is, uh, with the aim to improve the services that will be providing the students and the, the whole community of triple E. So, there, that ends our, um, uh, triple E town hall meeting regarding the remote learning curriculum and mid-year term. And again, we'll be having another town hall meeting this Wednesday, three P M, to discuss, um, the triple E one-three-five and one-four-five concerns and questions that we have. So, once again, thank you very much, um, for attending our, um, town hall meeting. Yeah, thank you, Sir Mike. Okay. So, if wala ng comments or concerns, uh, thank you and have a great day.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Claude.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Claude. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.